Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I’m going to call tonight’s meeting to order. And before I get into the regular agenda, I’d like to introduce the members of staff and council that are present here this evening. To my right, your left is Mr. Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services. Next to him is Carolyn Mashada, Manager of Legislative Services; Mr. Francis Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer. At the council table, Councillor Jack Arnold, Councillor Rosemary Wallace, Councillor Ted Shafer. I’m Mayor Peter Fassbender. And to my left, your right, is Councillor Gail Martin, Councillor Terry James, and Councillor Dave Hall. At our other staff table, we have Mr. Gerald Minchuck, our Director of Development Services and Economic Development; Mr. Rory Thompson, our Fire Chief; and Kim Hilton, our Director of Recreation, Culture, and Community Services. The first item on the agenda this evening is I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from January the 14th. Councillor Arnold moves, seconded by Councillor James. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all of those in favor, motion is carried. Moving into petitions and delegations, the first one we have is Janet Olson from the Ban the Resident Dogs Campaign for Animal Rights Legislation: Anti-Tethering Legislation Proposal. I want to welcome you. I did want to make a comment. There was some comment about a video which I know you are planning on showing tonight. And as with everything, there are some people where those kind of images are not something that they want to see. I recognize why you’re bringing them forward, so if people choose not to watch it, I think you’ll understand clearly why. The other thing, as you know, is you have five minutes. One of the things I did want to point out, we’ll receive this information tonight. We will then be giving it to staff to update us in terms of what they’re aware of as it relates to our bylaws and potential provincial legislation. So with that context, I’m sure you’ve been through this before. So Janet, I believe, you’re Janet?
I am.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much for having us here. And I will not be offended if you feel like you have to turn away from some of the images. You can understand that because they are so hard to look at how important this issue is to us. Imagine yourself standing in the middle of an eight-foot diameter circle and spending the rest of your life there. Imagine waking up every morning knowing that you will spend almost every minute of that day alone. Imagine not being able to walk more than a few feet in any direction, dragging a chain along with you every time you move. You long to run, but you can only pace. Imagine looking longingly through the window of your family’s home, watching as they go about their lives without you, hoping that today you might be brought inside to be with them. Imagine the mind-numbing boredom of doing nothing but sitting in the same spot all day, every day, never knowing the sheer joy of running free or chasing a ball, of playing with other dogs, or lying on a soft bed at your owner’s feet. This is what life is like, day after day, year after year, for thousands of resident dogs throughout the lower mainland. Unlike family pets, resident dogs are not welcome inside their homes as members of their family. They live alone in the yard, in a pen, on a chain, or inside a shed or garage. Resident dogs have addresses, not homes. Chained and penned dogs must eat, sleep, urinate, and defecate in a single confined area. They swell tur- and suffer from heat stroke in the summer, freeze, and die from hypothermia in the winter. Tethers can become entangled around other objects, further restricting their movement. In 2008, a St. Bernardo became hopelessly entangled, and the cord she was tethered with tried to chew off her own leg in an attempt to free herself. And many chained dogs have hung themselves when they have attempted to jump over their fences, such as these dogs did. This dog in Surrey strangled to death after struggling for hours to free himself from his tangled tether, his cries and whines for help ignored by his family. But all the ways the chain and cruelly confined dogs physically suffer pale in comparison to the emotional torment they endure by being isolated and consistently alone. This is Judith, a dog who spent almost her entire life on the end of a heavy chain in Burnaby. Despite being reported repeatedly to the SPCA, Judith remained on her chain for ten torturous years. At that time, Burnaby did not have an anti-chaining law as they do now, so Judith remained on her chain, her life filled with misery, boredom, loneliness, pain, and terrible neglect. Humans have specifically bred dogs for thousands of generations to want to be our constant companions more than they want anything else. Isolating a dog from their family is one of the cruelest things we can do to them. Resident dogs suffer from intense boredom, loneliness, frustration, anxiety, depression, and insanity. Eventually, they lose all hope, and their defeated souls are clearly evident. And yet, this cruelty is entirely supported by our current federal, provincial, and municipal laws. As long as this is legal, how can we ever consider ourselves a humane people? The implementation of an anti-tethering bylaw will not only make Langley a more humane community, but a safer one as well. Scrolling on the screen is a partial list of attacks on humans by chained or penned dogs over the past few years in the U.S. and Canada. Dogs, like humans, are fight-or-flight animals. Because tethered dogs have no opportunity to flee from perceived danger, their only option is to attack. Research has shown that consistently chained dogs are three times more likely to bite than unchained dogs. Young children are especially at risk as they are unaware of the potential danger. One particularly horrifying case illustrates how fast tragedy can strike. In 2005, a four-year-old boy named Robbie of Orange County, Virginia, was mauled to death by his family’s mixed-breed dog who was chained inside his pen. It took less than a minute for Robbie to walk into the pen and for the dog to fatally break his neck. As Ingrid Newkirk of PETA states, “If you want to protect your family, chain your door, not your dog.” This is a video of a chained dog named Alex. He is being approached by a man who is trying to gently loop a leash over his head. Despite the non-aggressive manner in which the man approaches him, it is clear Alex feels threatened, resulting in an aggressive response. No one would doubt that Alex would bite this man if he had the chance. But you will be surprised to see that Alex is not an aggressive dog at all. Once he is removed from the chain, Alex immediately transforms into the naturally gentle and affectionate dog he is. This is a very typical response from dogs once they are removed from their chains. More often than not, the chain is the source of the aggression, not the dog. Anti-tethering laws have been enacted by several states and in hundreds of communities throughout the U.S. and Canada, including Calgary, Burnaby, Delta, Lyons Bay, New West, Victoria, and soon in Surrey and Richmond. The legislation we are recommending has been enacted by the majority of these communities and is the easiest to adopt and enforce. It includes a ban on the unattended chaining of dogs and on long-term crating and penning of dogs. It requires that a responsible person must be outside with the chained dog and have them in visual range. The power to improve the lives of chained dogs like Judith is in your hands. Thanks to the anti-chaining law in Burnaby, Judith was finally liberated and spent the last year of her life as a much-loved and cherished member of her new family. Please help chained and isolated dogs currently suffering in your community by making the humane decision to ban unattended chaining and cruel confinement of dogs and ensure Langley becomes a safer and more humane community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from members of council? As I said, what we will do is pass this information over and ask for staff to provide council with an updated report. Councillor Hall?
I guess just for some clarification, staff is the goal on this mission. I guess I’d like to have a clear definition of what’s considered to be too long in terms of confinement, because obviously, there’s a spectrum. Some of the animal rights activist groups suggest that dogs should be indoor dogs only. And then there’s other people that will argue that, well, that’s cruel to keep them indoors out of their natural habitat and outdoors. So there has to be some sense that there are both good parents of people and good owners of dogs. Another thing I’d like clarified by our own staff is we do have an animal control bylaw. That’s bylaw number 2622, which I looked up. And in one section, Article 36, it says, “No person shall cause a dog, A, to be fastened, hitched, or tied by any rope, chain, or cord that is directly fastened, hitched, or tied to the dog’s neck.” So I guess there’s a potential loophole there in that a dog could then be tethered on a harness to the back. And so the isolation existence that you suggest, I’ll just finish and then I’ll let you respond. But then in our second section, it says in Article 42, it says that “The owner of a dog shall at all times when the dog is not on a leash, keep the dog confined, either A, indoors,” and it goes on more, “B, in a fenced area, or C, by securely tethering.” So we have something in our existing bylaw that even is contradictory to the section that’s above. So this was passed in 2006 and signed by the mayor, so I believe it exists. I looked it up. So I’ll go to staff first, and then I’ll come back to the delegation.
Mr. Chung?
I’ll refer to Ms. Mashada.
Sorry, I don’t have the copy of the bylaw in front of me, but I believe that the second section that you referred to refers to dangerous dogs that must be contained or restrained. And the first part that you referred to, I think, is in general for dogs that do not have the classification of dangerous or aggressive.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that’s why we’ve said we’re asking staff to take the new information and review our existing bylaws to see either the consistency or whatever, and then bring forward a report to council so that we can take a more wholesome look at this. Please.
It may be possible that that legislation you were talking about where you can’t chain a dog, and then it’s not quite clear, but what most communities have is that you cannot wrap the chain around the dog’s neck. And I think that’s what your legislation is referring to. It has to be attached to a collar or a halter. But it isn’t actually an anti-chaining ban that you have there, it’s just that the chain cannot be wrapped around the dog’s neck. One thing we didn’t bring was pictures of dogs with chains that have had the chains wrapped around their neck, and how horrific that it can be on the dog. It digs a hole right through into their neck. And that’s why that has been banned in most communities.
Supplementary to that.
Councillor Hall?
So I was wondering what we had, but I also looked at a few other municipalities. North Vancouver had an anti-tethering bylaw section, but it suggested that the tethering should not be to any kind of a collar that was a choke collar.
Choke collar.
Right? And but what you’re asking for is something that’s more comprehensive than that. And I gather that Richmond is looking at an amendment to their current policy that is a little more stringent than what they have presently. So there must be a degree. So I guess what I’m looking from staff in the future for is the enforceability of some of these. So there’s an example on my desk here, presumably from you.
There is a handout. I don’t know if that’s the handout of 34 pages that we were sent by email. That just suggests the two bylaw amendments that we are looking for. But you’re right that there’s a scale of anti-tethering limits. It goes from a complete ban on tethering to an unattended chaining ban, which is what we’re looking at, to a time-limited one that allows for the dog’s toiletry needs, or to a multi-hour chaining limit, say, three hours a day. Many of the communities in the United States that went for the three hours a day found it highly unenforceable because they couldn’t determine what time the dog was on the chain, and it ended up requiring more officer hours, not less. Whereas the unattended tethering ban, if you don’t see a person outside with the dog, is a clear violation, easy to enforce, requires fewer officer hours, because once the bylaw is complied with, there will not be any chained dogs left outside alone, and then you get far fewer complaints. So most communities noted that they went for an unattended tethering ban, they required less officer hours to enforce it.
So I’ll just finish with this. Finally, on the very bottom part of the recommended amendment, number two, it says, “No person will keep a dog consistently confined in a garage, shed, basement, attic, closet, or crate.” Once again, I guess the difficulty I have is how does one define consistently confined?
I think it goes on to say for no more than 10 hours out of a 24-hour day.
Any forms of close confinement must not exceed 10 hours in a 24-hour period.
Because we recognize that when people go to work, if they have dogs with high separation anxiety, that might chew up the house if they’re left alone, that they might have to be crated for the period of time the person is at work. So some dogs need to be, may need to be crated to keep themselves and their home safe. So that’s a reasonable amount of time while the person is at work, and then when the person comes home, the dogs get out. The additional benefit of a time limit on crating is that now you have a way of dealing with puppy mills, where dogs are crated 24 hours a day, and pens 24 hours a day, never get out of the pens at all. And that’s a way to help enforce puppy mills. And pimple fighting rings, too. They’re typically kept in pens permanently or on chains permanently, except when they’re fighting. So this is another way that gives your officers more power to prevent cruelty that you might otherwise not have a bylaw to prevent.
Thank you.
Well, Councillor Martin?
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for not watching your pictures. I can’t even watch the Sarah McLachlan commercial on TV for the SPCA.
I can’t either.
So it was upsetting enough just listening to you, never mind seeing the pictures. In our report back to staff, I’d like, and I’m sure they will, I’ll get in touch with LAPS and see if, how many complaints we have on tethering of dogs. I went through your 34 pages of presentation. I read this story about Donovan, and it happens all too often.
Yes.
I know several years ago, my neighbor kept a dog tethered, and I eventually phoned the SPCA and they took the dog away. So, you know, it’s something that...
Wow.
Well, I mean, I can’t stand a dog being tethered, but I think there has to be some kind of a bylaw that, I don’t know whether any bylaw is enforceable, to be quite honest with you unless you get a complaint, but the bylaw that I thought was probably the most fairest was Burnaby’s bylaw, and that’s that they’re no longer, not tethered for no longer than an hour while unattended. Several people walk their dogs downtown, they go in for coffee, they can leave the dog outside. I don’t see a problem with that.
Neither do we.
I wouldn’t do that, but I don’t see a problem with that.
Yeah.
And the other one is keeping a dog tethered more than an hour, whether attended or not, on property other than residential. So that would, again...
Yes.
Your suggestion on number two here that Councillor Hall just referred to, I don’t think, you know, having a dog confined in a garage, a shed, a basement, an attic, or a closet, that is on private property, so I don’t think we can enforce that anyways.
Only by reports. I agree completely.
Yeah, I guess by reports.
Yeah.
But again, you know, I mean, if my neighbor, when I had a house, was keeping a dog, I mean, I know they did, but, you know, the dog was well-loved and everything, but they were. So, you know, I don’t think that that’s as enforceable as the Burnaby bylaw. So I would like staff to look at the Burnaby bylaw. I do think it’s good, and of course, the clarification with what Councillor Hall read out, and getting in touch with LAPS. You know, all too often, referring back to Donovan, that’s what happens. People get a dog for their kids, and then, you know, the kids, and there’s the dog in the backyard.
And then you don’t want to go back.
So, yeah, I appreciate your presentation, and again, I apologize for not being able to look at it.
I understand completely. It’s hard for me. I used to cry when I read through the whole thing. I’ve just done it so many times now, but it still sometimes chokes me up. I can’t, anybody who loves dogs can’t look at that and not feel terrible pain. And those are all lower mainland dogs, by the way.
Well, I want to thank you. I don’t see any other hands. We will refer, as I said, this to staff, and we will get a report back, and we’ll take a look at our existing bylaw and what modifications staff might want to bring forward to council as a result. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Mayor Fassbender. Thank you all, members.
Thank you. Good night. Okay, there are no committee minutes or special committees, so we’ll move right into the mayor’s report. To start off the mayor’s report, we received a notification yesterday that Mr. John Jeffries, who is a freeman of the city of Langley, passed away. And it’s someone that all of us are very well aware of. John was instrumental in the formation of the city of Langley, and over the years has been a strong advocate for all kinds of issues around our community. He will be missed, and I know his family is grieving, so our thoughts go out to them. And I know that his wife is not that well either. She is in long-term care in Langley as well. And so we just send our best regards, and we will send a note accordingly to the Jeffries family. I have no information about any planned service or celebration of life, and if we do, we will definitely pass that along. But it is another one of those transitions in our community. And I think of people like Reggie Easingwood and so on that have done a lot to contribute in their own way. And John will be missed for that. So moving from there, the next regular council meeting will be on Monday, February the 4th, and then the next meeting after that is Monday, February the 18th. The February 4th meeting will be televised by Shaw. And of course, all of our meetings are now being livestreamed, so we are out there all the time anyways. So moving from there, Metro Vancouver, Councillor Martin, do you have anything? You have nothing, thank you. Any questions for Councillor Martin on Metro Vancouver? Moving into library happenings, Councillor Shafer, there is an on-the-table item aside from your regular reports, so I’ll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In front of you, you have the meeting highlights from the board, and this was held on January 16th. The board chair will be Councillor Grant Ward again from the township of Langley. Vice Chair is Michael Wright, City of Poco. The treasurer is Councillor Helen Fathers from White Rock. And the B.C. Library Trustees Association rep is Jeanne Canapose from Delta. An interlink rep is Ron Smith from the District of Hope. And the alternate is Carissa Bell from Maple Ridge. Ron Smith from Hope, he volunteered to be the rep, and the meetings are held in Burnaby at Metrotown, so he will have a few treks going in from Hope to Metrotown about six or seven times a year. And the 2013 budget was passed unanimously, and from what I understand, it wasn’t without difficulty, but the staff worked very hard to keep the budget at a reasonable amount, and it was a weighted vote, so everybody was quite pleased with this. The board meeting dates are below in there, and it’s just, there’s one just about every month, except for the summer vacation time. And second to this, I have here locally, there’s monthly art critiques on Monday, January 28th, from 7 till 9. I have a teen writers’ group, Monday, January 28th, from 7:30 till 8:45, and this is for a group of homeschoolers aged 13 to 18 who are using the one-year adventure novel. And aromatherapy, Saturday, February 2nd, 2 till 3. Learn more about natural approach to some common health problems. And that’s here in the Langley Library. That’s it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councillor Shafer? Seeing none, moving from there, a couple of updates that we want to make. First of all, Mr. Chung, did you want to speak about the schedule for our upcoming financial plan presentations?
Thank you, Your Worship. Staff have been working extremely hard over the past couple months to develop the 2013 financial plan with the city council. And I will refer to Mr. Light to provide counsel and the public some of the upcoming public consultation process with respect to our 2013 financial plan.
Thank you. We will be advertising the financial plan results on January 24th, Thursday, January 24th and January 31st, as well as putting them on our website. The first two readings of the bylaw will be on Monday, February 4th, and then we’ll have a public financial plan open house on Wednesday, February 6th, here at City Hall at 6:30 PM till 8:00 PM. It’s a drop-in, and you can ask any questions you have. We will also be taking questions from the public through our social media. If people have questions in regards to the budget, we’ll be looking at that as well. Then we’ll be making a presentation again at the February 18th council meeting with the committee of the whole, inviting public to have input into the budget process at that meeting. And pending that input, we will have the final reading on March 4th.
Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Chung, did you want to speak about the transportation plan open house this week?
Yes. On January 23rd, that’s on Wednesday, from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, on the main floor lobby in the City Hall, we’ll be hosting a public open house. And the purpose of the public open house is to seek feedback from the residents on the city’s multimodal transportation strategy that will guide us for the next 25 years on roadway network, transit infrastructure, bicycle facilities, and pedestrian systems. So we encourage residents to come to the public open house and provide us with feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For council, I promised, as you know, I was invited to attend the Economics of Policing Summit in Ottawa this last week, and I went along with Mayor Watts, our neighbor, and a number of other municipal representatives from across the country. A couple of things that I wanted to just highlight. Number one, it is the first time ever that we have had federal, provincial, territorial police agencies at both the RCMP and the municipal level, and local government officials in the same room, talking about the future of policing and the economics of policing. The conference was well-attended. I have a copy of the program if any of you would like to see it, but there were speakers from the UK, from the United States, from New Zealand. There was a number of panels made up of experts from across this country. The only panel that there wasn’t was municipal representatives at a panel, but that, I think, was part of the process as we’re moving ahead. I do want to thank the federal government for taking the initiative to have this first conference, and you may have seen some of the media reports, and most of the municipal representatives said that we were thankful for the fact that this was the first time a conference like this happened. Secondly, it is only the beginning of a new partnership between ourselves and the other levels of government, because we are the largest contributor to the cost of policing, whether we’re municipalities or RCMP jurisdictions. And we need to keep this conversation going. And as you all know, with the new contract that was signed with the RCMP, many of the provisions in that contract, for greater transparency, greater accountability, more understanding of the cost implications of decisions on policing that are made, including things like federal legislation that is put into place that ultimately affects the cost of policing or community safety, need to be thought about before the legislation is put in place, so that there’s good dialogue and consultation about that. And that message was clearly heard by all of the participants in Ottawa, and I personally feel it was a good first step. Did we come to any earth-shattering conclusions? No. But a working group has been formed with FCM as a partner, along with the federal government, and the province of British Columbia and Saskatchewan are taking the lead to form a working group that’s going to look at what are the next steps, and what tangible steps need to be taken by all of the parties, and especially the federal government in terms of a national policing strategy, which we currently do not have. So what do I think the conference was worthwhile? Yes, I do. All of the FCM representatives there felt the same way. We had great opportunity for input and didn’t hesitate to give that. So I think that on the whole, it was a worthwhile conference to be at, but it is only the beginning of what I hope will be much more productive and more focused discussions coming out of it. So I would give you that update. If anybody has any questions, I’d be happy to answer them. Seeing none, moving on into administrative reports. I need a motion that council of the city of Langley consents to the repeal of the Greater Vancouver Regional District Mosquito Control Administration and Coordination Service Establishment bylaw, number 10342005, and consents to the adoption of the Greater Vancouver Regional District bylaw to repeal the Mosquito Control Administration and Coordination Service bylaw, number 11792012. If I have a mover? Moved by Councillor Martin, seconded by Councillor James. Mr. Chung, did you want to speak to that, just to give context?
Thank you, Your Worship. This bylaw was initially established back in 2005, when there was a concern about the coordination from a regional perspective on to combat West Nile virus. And it was meant to be as a bylaw to coordinate the effort from all the regions and municipalities from a finance, secure funding perspective, as well as coordinate communication plans. In 2012, the province has no longer provided funding to combat the West Nile virus because it has not been issued. And consequently, Metro Vancouver staff and the municipalities themselves felt that we no longer require this bylaw, and hence the recommendations to repeal this bylaw from the regional district.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councillor Hall?
So I’m not aware of anywhere within the confines of the city of Langley that we would have a mosquito problem, but certainly areas of the township and other surrounding municipalities must have some challenges still. municipalities must have some challenges still, whether it's West Nile or not. So if the province doesn't help those individual municipalities out, and the metro region as a collective doesn't, are they left on their own to cope with mosquito control?
Mr. Chung?
Your Worship, to councillor Hall, it's a combination of both. As you can read in the report, Metro Vancouver is still involved with mosquito control for Maple Ridge, Pitt Meadows, Surrey, Township of Langley, and some private land, because there's still proliferations of mosquitoes during some of the spring for shed months. And they're responsible for that, as well as efforts being made by those municipalities. Similar to City of Langley, over the past few years, even though we don't have those areas where we may have mosquito issues, we still put in those larvaicide pellets into our catch bases to mitigate that issue. And we haven't, you know, experienced any mosquito issues over the last few years, so we actually have stopped doing that practice in 2012. So, you know, at those other municipalities, they're still continuing on with those mosquito strategies, as well as their own municipalities' effort as well.
Well, just supplementary to that, I mean, so I'm going to vote for repeal, or I'm asked to vote for repeal of a Greater Vancouver regional strategy, but have we been in contact at all with the township? So I go to regional parks, and Darby Reach in particular would be one, and access to Macmillan Island, and that can be a real mosquito haven. So I'm just, I'm just wondering, with the repeal of this, what measures are going to be taken for my benefit as a city person in going to that regional park?
Your Worship, councillor Hall, those efforts will still continue on to maintain mosquito control in those regional parks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Arnold?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chung mentioned that we stopped in 2012. So did we, or do we have a way of seeing if it made a difference? In other words, did we have a problem once we stopped?
Mr. Chung?
Or did we even check that?
Your Worship, to councillor Arnold, no, we haven't. That's why we have stopped doing it. We haven't experienced any problems prior to us continuing with larvaicide control, and after we stopped doing the larvaicide control.
And after, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor. Opposed, if any, the motion is carried. Moving on to recommended trail names, we talked about this at the last meeting. I need a motion that council name Trail 3, City Park Trail, that council name Trail 4, Dog Park Loop, C, that council name Trail 6, Pleasantale Creek Trail, and D, that council name Trail 7, Muckel Creek Trail, and that council name Trail 10, Brighton Lagoon Nature Trail. Someone like to move? Moved by councillor Hall, seconded by councillor Martin. Anyone have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor, it is carried. Thank you. Now moving on to the ICBC road safety recommendations for 48th Avenue and 208 Street to H.D. Stafford. Mr. Chung, would you like to speak to that report?
Thank you, Your Worship. This report before you is for your information, and is based on the safety audit that ICBC has conducted for 48th Avenue between 208 Street and H.D. Stafford. Staff has reviewed the recommendations from the safety audit. Overall, in general, I think we are agreeable to the proposed speed limits recommendations, which is to post some no park zone sign and playground zone signs along 48th Avenue. We're in agreement to replacing the speed humps with raised intersections on 48th Avenue at 207 Street and 205 A Streets. With respect to the angle parking and converting that to parallel parking, staff will consider that a little bit further, because we do recognize that there is a significant amount of parking stalls in the minute as a result of converting that from angle parking to parallel parking. So staff will continue to work with our designer, and once we have a complete plan, we'll present it back to council for consideration.
Thank you. I need a motion to receive that report. Moved by councillor Martin, seconded by councillor Schaefer. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. Mr. Chung, you said to replace the speed bumps with raised intersection, but there's no budget implications, so what would the plan be to do that?
Please.
We are going to be incorporating the construction of the raised intersection as part of the budget.
When you do 48th Avenue?
When we do 48th Avenue.
When you do the roadwork there?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Hall?
So does the raised intersection, in the experience of these ICBC people, I guess you have to speak on their behalf, because they're not here, so, does the raised intersection have the same effect in slowing vehicles down as the existing bumps that are there right now?
I can't speak for them, but based on my understanding, yes, it does have the same effect, because you do have to slow down to get over the hump and drive along the raised intersection, and then come back down. So it's, acts a similar impact as a speed hump.
Okay, so we have an upcoming open house on transportation, and the public has an opportunity to speak to whether they believe that this should be a major collector road coming right through the 48th and 208 intersection, or maintaining the current configuration on grade as it exists, which historically has been the major collector. So to some extent, we have, well, not necessarily us, but the school board has redirected a considerable amount of traffic along that 48th by their rerouting of the bus pickup and student drop-off and whatnot. But that's forced a lot of traffic by a park that may be significantly challenged now in terms of safety. So tied into this, I guess, is I'm suggesting that when we do the city park as part of the master parks plan, we look at potential fencing for protection, we look at perhaps reconfiguration of that upper sand-based field, along with our investigation of the possibility of artificial. And at the same time, the parking, I think, all of a sudden becomes a bigger issue again, because there's always been complaints about parking there, but it was when we had football in a big way at that end, and the neighborhood was inundated with people that couldn't walk from the existing parking lot, and so they parked on the side streets there. But this proposal asks to cut down from 28 existing spots down to 12, which might cause a spill-out. So I think earlier I had asked why we would be redoing parking on 48th without considering perhaps another parking lot in the, what is it, the southwest section of that park, I guess just south of the existing sports box. And so I think it would be better that we look at that parking situation before we get too much further along in this roadwork.
Mr. Chung?
We'll take that under consideration.
I think the other thing, Mr. Chung, if I'm not mistaken, is we're enhancing safety with better sidewalks along 48th and a number of other improvements because of the school implications there, but in both cases, our master recreation plan and our transportation plan will look at those issues. And again, reports will come back to council. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, motion to receive the report. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, it is carried. Moving there, on to the next item, I need a motion that the manager of Information Services, Mr. Ken Ogden, be authorized to attend the Agresso User Conference in San Diego, California, May 21 to 24, 2013. And Agresso is not an aggression management program, it is a computer program, just in case anybody misheard. Moved by councillor James, seconded by councillor Martin. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, if any, the motion is carried. There are no bylaws tonight, there are no motions or notices of motion. In your correspondence, you have correspondence from the Rotary Club of Langley Central asking us for a proclamation, and as you know, our policy is not to do proclamations, but to make note of the fact that February the 23rd, 2013, is Rotary International Day, and we have four Rotary Clubs in the two Langleys, two of them that operate in the city of Langley, and we all know what a great work they do in contributing, so we're more than happy to make notice of that. And we may want to put that on the next council agenda as well as another reminder, so that the public is well-aware of that fact. Moving from there, TNI Network, request for permission to conduct door-to-door canvassing. This is a form, we need a motion. I am going to excuse myself from this discussion, because I happen to be a board member of World Vision Canada, who they are operating with. But before I turn the chair over to councillor Schaefer, if anyone has any questions about that, I am in a unique position to address it. Other than that, I'll vacate the chair and turn it over to councillor Schaefer. So that said, you can take it and see if you get a motion. And I'll turn my microphone off when I go into hall.
Okay, I need a mover? Secondary? Terry? Any questions? Councillor Hall?
When we have door-to-door canvassing, quite often, it's some cause that's usually health-related, and we usually give them a window of opportunity. Now, I'm wondering what that standard window of opportunity is, and I think it's usually a month, so that they don't overlap and the individual resident doesn't get inundated by all sorts of people constantly coming to the door and asking for stuff. This particular proposal has multiple windows of opportunity that extend to great lengths. So I'm kind of reluctant to go along with what's being asked for. But I'd, before I make up my mind, I'll ask the question through the Chair of Staff, if we have guidelines of openings that exist, or at least standard practice?
The policy is silent on the length of the period for door-to-door canvassing. Typically, most of the organizations that we have granted permission to are, have been for a period of one month, which usually coincides with their month, whether it be a cancer month or what have you. I did speak to the person making this request, and they had originally wanted to request the entire year as an open canvassing option, I guess, but I did tell them that wasn't advisable, and they have brought it back to this too, and I guess keep in mind that it is for two different organizations.
I guess the question I would have, I don't recall anyone in our community doing sort of the June, June to July, and November to December. Is there anybody in February? Is that, that's Daffodils, and is that, or is that April?
My recollection is that April is Cancer Month, and we have not yet received their application for 2013.
Okay, so is there anything for February that you can recall?
No, we have not had an application for door-to-door canvassing for quite some time.
Okay. I mean, I think this is, this is three months out of the year, but if it's not going to interfere with a local community organization, obviously, it's for children that they're collecting the money, so I get the point that councillor Hall is making, but I, if it's not going to interfere, I'm not going to have a problem with this. Thank you.
I guess I would just add that we have no way of knowing whether or not that will conflict with another application later in the year at this point in time.
Yeah, well, I'm just going from past. I mean, I would think if we're going to have a local group canvass in February, we would have received their application already, and I don't think we've had any.
I would make that assumption also, and no, we have not.
Right, and I just don't recall in past years for June, sort of the month of June, well, it is the month of June and the month of November, so, yeah, so I don't have a problem with that. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Hall?
Okay, so I don't want my argument to be interpreted as being anti-this organization or the work that they're doing. It's a quality charity. But what I am suggesting is that I think that three separate months could become onerous, and I think that other organizations, I would encourage them to come to us to similarly canvass. So I think if our common practice is a month, and I hear your argument that we don't hear any present conflict, I could live with two, and I could live with February and June, thinking that if other groups do come later in the year, then we wouldn't have this conflict in November. So I could live, I think, with endorsing this if it were limited to those February and June, but I don't think I'd go for all three.
Maybe make a suggestion that we do not have a policy on month yet, and that maybe we should, I'm guesstimating, approve this, and then send this back for staff for a policy clarification for future ones down the road. Suggestion. Councillor Martin?
Well, another question crossed my mind. I guess what first got me when I was reading the request was that they're based in Peachland, or whoever wrote this is...
TAN.
Pardon?
TAN.
Yeah, well, the address is Peachland. So are they doing this in all communities in the Lower Mainland, or is it just Langley? Do you know? You don't know? Yeah, because I just found it rather strange that a Peachland company would be coming into Langley. I mean, I know they're doing it for World Vision and others, but I just found that a little strange, and wondered if they were going to every community in the Lower Mainland.
I would assume that it's their head office, and they have canvassers throughout. I, of course, don't know if they've made application in other municipalities, but...
Yeah.
Councillor Hall?
I hear councillor Schaefer saying, I just, I'm still uncomfortable endorsing this, but I think you're on the right track. I think perhaps we should just deal with this motion, and then have a supplementary motion asking staff to see if they can work out some guidelines for future.
I agree. Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion? Against? Councillor Hall? Okay, it's been passed, and I shall ask the mayor to come back? Thank you.
Can I ask next?
Were you going to go with the supplementary?
No.
I would assume the mayor can come back, because it's... Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, councillor Schaefer.
Mr. Mayor? Would somebody like to move the supplementary motion, then? Okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Refer to staff? Secondary?
What are we referring to?
To get a policy on this canvassing for the city of Langley? And the length of time, and if they interact with any other organization.
So we're asking staff to bring back a report to expand on either existing policy or amendments to it?
Get a clarification.
Okay. Moved and seconded?
Carolyn, that's what I said.
Okay. Carolyn, did you have something else you wanted to say? You just wanted that clarification?
I have an existing policy.
It's kind of what I thought, yes. So we'll review our existing and update as necessary. Councillor Wallace?
Oh, just moved it.
Oh, you seconded it. Oh, great, thank you. Councillor Schaefer moved it, and you seconded it. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any other comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Opposed, if any, the motion is carried. Just as a point on the whole issue of canvassing, it was interesting on the weekend, our doorbell rang, my wife answered it, there was two young gentlemen there with, talking about security. And I overheard it, and I came to the door and I said, "What are you doing?" And they said, "Oh, we're just finding out about people's home security." And I said, "Really?" And I said, "Do you have a license from the city of Langley? Because you are selling security services, right?" "Oh, yes." And I said, "Really? I'd like to see it." "Well, I think we got it from the other Langley." And I said, "Really? But do you have it?" "No." "Well, and here's my provincial card." Anyways, I said to them, "What you're doing is not appropriate under our bylaw, and you need to go to City Hall." So it just was top of mind for me that we don't want our residents assaulted with all kinds of people who come under the guise of things that aren't legitimate. So I think it's very appropriate because we're getting more of that, and we had the same situation, if you recall, when we had the gas companies that were out marketing alternative sources of gas, and that got a little bit out of hand. So I think it's a good thing to review in light of that. Moving on, the Fort Langley Lions Club, they want to remind us that Lions Day, like Rotary International Day, Lions Day is on February the 1st, 2013. And that said, is there any unfinished business? Seeing none, is there any new business? Councillor Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the Chair to City Administrator, is there any update on the city master plan survey that has gone out to the community? I believe it went out at the end of November, beginning of December.
Your Worship to councillor Schaefer, are you referring to the master parks of our council? I'll refer that to Ms. Hilton.
Please.
We haven't seen the results of the survey yet, but once we do, we will forward them on to council.
Is, what kind of response have you gotten back?
I believe it was sufficient enough to get a statistically accurate or whatever survey, and they were still tallying them towards the end of December, so we'll get some results back shortly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none, I'll receive a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Wallace, seconded by councillor Schaefer. All of those in favor, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.